Hey, good evening there, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. Alrighty, we'll get started. I thank everybody for coming out tonight for the work session. We'll go to item number one. It's gonna be talking about a data center ordinance. I'd like to ask our attorney Avery Jackson to talk to us about what he emailed us and we got about this ordinance.
Yes, so previously you've been provided with an ordinance that Calheda County was looking at and considering. They've had worked on it, but I don't, they haven't adopted anything yet. They have a moratorium on data centers currently and they're looking at what rules they're going to adopt. So, the ones that we have were something they were looking at, but not in the final form. What you've been provided with tonight is another example. Bartow County has enacted some already and it's shorter than Calheda County's and easier to understand and I think goes along with our ordinance a little bit better maybe than the one that Calheda was considering. So you have another option before you today that is Bartow County's and they have data centers in Bartow County.
Do they have a moratorium on any future data centers?
I don't know. I know that there's a moratorium in Douglas and then a moratorium in Calheda, but those are the only two I'm currently aware of. But they adopted these rules to allow data centers in a certain zoning district. And if the board wants to approve these, it'd have to go through the planning and zoning process and be advertised and we'd have to have a public hearing. So this is still just to see if the board likes the idea and wants to go forward with it and then we can have the planning and zoning department go through the advertising process and put it on the planning and zoning board's agenda. But anyway, it's another kind of option. And so, the one before you, what it would do is it would put data centers in light industrial district or heavy industrial, because heavy industrial encompasses everything. And light industrial, you'll see that there's a definition of a battery energy storage system and battery storage system and then a definition for data centers. And then there's some provisions for the data centers which would include setbacks, acreage requirements, operating times, noise, decimal levels. So various things that...
What is the... In reading what Calheda County was looking at, there's a lot in their ordinance or post-ordinance about water, soil testing, continuous water testing. What is the data center releasing that seems to be so controversial?
I don't know enough about data centers to know.
But there was a lot of verbiage in there about wildlife and plant life and ground, testing the dirt up to six inches depth and water testing, well testing.
And that may be because one was being considered right next to the Chattahoochee River in Calheda County. So that may be part of it too.
You don't know which way that water flowing.
Right.
But yeah, I would need to know what the downside is to the data centers. That we have a finding out period.
Yeah, it's certainly good to go and investigate and see what they are. I know that Douglas County has some operating there currently.
Right. They have some already in operation?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Some of them use wastewater, so that might be what it's all about is, you know, making sure that the wastewater is treated before it's released back into the river.
Yeah, that was something I had. They talk about the water and gray water and when it's released, what clarity of water is it when it's released? Seems to be a tremendous amount of EPD standards involved with the data center. Just curious about all the dangers other than it homes a lot. But there was stuff in there about how the light posts could be so there's not reflective light. I can't imagine what that looks like at night.
I don't know. So there are two options again. The one, and Calheda County has not adopted that yet and they're considering what they're gonna do. So we don't know what their final ones will look like at this point. We know that they're studying it and looking at it. And I assumed that Douglas County is too and that's what they're doing. So it'll be interesting to see what they craft and come up with. But Bartow has adopted one already. And this recent one is based off of what Bartow has already adopted and included. And they have data centers there already.
Alright, thank you Avery for getting us this document for us to read and study. I will be getting with y'all for a field trip to a data center here. I'll be getting, letting y'all get some, show you some dates. So I'll have more information on that for y'all, for us to go. Alrighty. Okay, item number two is a county cleanup of the property for magistrate court. This will be our marshal and county attorney be speaking over this. Marshal?
It on? It is on, okay. Hey Commissioners, I'm sure you guys are some pretty aware. We have some pretty dilapidated properties in Harrelson County. I kinda hit the ground running why I accepted this position almost two years ago. I would've loved to have started on flat ground, but I felt like I started 10 feet under. And I feel like we're slowly digging our way out. But there are several properties, three to four in this county, that we have kind of reached the end of our limitations in magistrate court. We have cited these people time and time again. We've placed them upon probation. We've even placed them in jail, which is really a last resort. And there's just several people. It's generational. It's a mindset. Nothing's happening. So really, our next step is kind of why we're here on this, is that we need to abate the nuisance. Because obviously, it's not going to take care of itself. And I feel like if we can go ahead and kind of set a precedent here in Harrelson County that we're not going to tolerate that, I think it's gonna cut down on some of the other long-term effects of other properties that may be doing the same thing. The problem is, when I say abate a nuisance, the burden of that does fall back to the county. It falls back upon the taxpayer. And that's kind of where we're in this conundrum of how are we going to abate this nuisance? Are we gonna use private companies? Are we gonna take bids? Are we gonna use county resources and keep up with our fuel, our time and backfill it that way? I've got a couple suggestions that, you know, we could talk about at a later date from some of the surrounding counties and cities and how they do it. And now, there's ways to recuperate that money, right? There's still gonna be an upfront cost to the taxpayer unfortunately enough. And there may be a one-year, a two-year, three-year process where you essentially lien the property. And that person has that opportunity to pay that back to the taxpayer, right? We're not in it for profit. We just want them to clean up their property and clean it up in a manageable way. You know, and unfortunately, if they're not able to pay that back, then you look at unfortunacies in the property based upon the tax lien. That's some of the things that we're kind of into. And there's two in particular that this program would probably work really well on. But until we have approval from the board to move forward and to figure out where this funding comes from, we're kind of at a standstill.
What is our ordinances? What is our procedure here for ordinance? I mean, we've gotta have, for us to be able to say that you gotta clean your property up, what does our ordinance say that...
So the ordinances, as you may well be aware, some of them are either non-existent or very dated in language. There's some conflicting language in there where some say 30 days, some say 60 days, some has no time limit, some's discretionary. And again, speaking with the city of Dallas, they don't have a definite timeline. They like to normally give a 60-day period for them to make some type of progress, which is kind of what I abide, 60 to 90 days. Some of the properties are bad enough. I don't expect them to be fully cleaned within that 60 to 90 days. But as long as they're continuing to make progress, we continue to work with them. Because that's really the best thing for everybody, right? It helps restore some community pride back into that community and even in the homeowner themselves. But we don't necessarily have a date per se. It's just non-existent at this point.
Well, in order for us to enforce it, do we have to?
So, this is the thing for magistrate court. So, the way that magistrate court works is if I sign the order, the county has to do it. I did not want to go that route without bringing it to y'all first because there is a respect here in between me and the marshal and the county attorney. We want everybody to be on the same grounds. We want these properties cleaned up, but we understand we can't do them back-to-back. You know, it might be that we can do one now and not do another one for a few months. We don't want y'all to be hit with a burden of two properties right off hand. So, but the way that it does work is magistrate will sign an order and then it will be, it gets turned over to y'all for payment. I just didn't want to go that route.
But what's to keep property owners from just doing it again?
Commissioner, unfortunately, there's nothing. We could be right back in that same process all over again. I mean, ultimately, there's a few properties. And the last thing I want to do is number one, lien somebody's private property. Number two, I definitely don't want to seize anybody's private property, right? It's that fine gray line, but it's to a point where it's beyond a nuisance. It's beyond a mattress or it's beyond a bag of trash. I mean, this is stuff that if I could get the EPD actually come down here and do something, they'd probably be appalled at some of these properties. But essentially, beyond it being a reoccurring process and us ultimately seizing the property, there's nothing that stops them. Now, there can be court orders. Judge Domiano can definitely put in court orders and keep them on probation during some of the process that we can do visitation and follow-ups to make sure they're complying. But it's just like any other court order, Commissioner. You know, compliance only goes so far. I mean, we can't necessarily make them keep up.
So if we lien, if we, if the trash is cleaned up and we lien the property and if they pay, as long as they pay their taxes every year, that lien will sit there till they sell that property? Or do we have another way of doing it?
The lien would become part of their taxes and they would have to pay the lien with their taxes or the property would be sold for taxes, just like if they didn't pay it.
You can attach to the property taxes.
Usually, a lien has to be taken care of before they can even pay their taxes.
Well, this would be, it would be part of their taxes. So it would be part of their tax bill. The tax commissioner, once the tax commissioner got the lien, it would be added to their tax bill and collected, just like taxes are collected. And so there's two processes that these usually take. There's the criminal process where the marshal goes out and cites somebody. You can get 30 days in jail, $1,000 fine for a violation. You can get repeated violations. So that's what they're talking about, getting fines and thrown in jail. There's another process that's a civil process that counties and cities can bring to abate a nuisance. And it's a nuisance abatement process. You file it, you have a hearing in magistrate court and you can get an order that allows the county to abate the nuisance itself. Of course, then we gotta use county resources to abate that nuisance. And then at the end of that process, we file our expenses in magistrate court. We get the lien, we attach the lien to the property, send it to the tax commissioner and the tax commissioner goes through the same process as if it was regular taxes. There's another process too that, on a criminal action, if somebody's faced with jail time or significant fines, they might be willing to sign a consent order and the county might be willing to sign a consent order to resolve that criminal case that would allow the county to abate the nuisance. It's going the same route, except you're doing it in the criminal aspect. But usually, both sides are gonna have to agree to do it in the criminal versus the civil. So that's kind of the process that these things take.
How many times have you been out to these properties?
I'll use two properties and I'll give you an approximate sum. I'll say between those two properties, I myself have probably responded somewhere between 25 to 30 times within two years. One of the properties, right outside the city limits of Bremen, that's unincorporated county, I pulled the 911 calls for the last five years, calls for service. And not even counting the times I've been out there, there's been 26 calls for service to this one property, from theft to overdoses to suspicious activity to even warrants served. Unfortunately, there's a criminal element along with these properties. A lot of really bad properties here, they just, they're essentially, they're harboring, they're evading law enforcement, right? These guys will run out of the back of the house when they see me, barefoot and all. They'll just run out because they try to avoid me as much as they can. But I will tell you, they will come out later on at night. And there are some of our elderly citizens, some of our neighbors here, that have caught them looking in car windows, house windows, in their lawn at 2 o'clock in the morning. And they're scared to death. They're scared to death. So there's other elements that go along just beyond the nuisance of, you know, an eyesore.
It's a problem that needs to be rectified.
So if we, if we clean up property today, then we would have a chance to recollect that in 26, the year 2026?
Potentially, Commissioner, yeah.
Probably not that quick, but...
Probably not that quick.
Probably not that quick.
Yeah, I mean, by the time we got litigated and everything else, it would probably be past that tax. He's correct. It'd probably be past that tax deadline because we're, believe it or not, we're already halfway through the year almost, so...
So there wouldn't be no issue of potential litigation against whoever's cleaning it up as far as hauling off potentially good stuff or whatever, just getting it gone?
There's always the potential. You have to follow the order very strictly. So if the order says you can remove abandoned vehicles and the order's gonna follow whatever the ordinance says. So if the ordinance says you can't have more than three unregistered vehicles on your property, then, or say, unregistered or unoperable vehicles, then those vehicles would have to be unregistered or unoperable and you'd have to prove that. And if you took a vehicle that was registered and operable that somebody was using, yeah, you'd be... There's liability when you go on somebody's property and do things. So now, you're protected by a court order, but again, if you stray outside the lines, then there's absolutely potential for damage.
Fortunately enough for us, or unfortunately, as it may be, I don't think we're gonna be collecting too many vehicles. I think it's gonna be beat-up, rundown campers, mattresses, legitimate trash. And there may be one or two vehicles in the mix. But I think overall, there's not gonna be anything of high value. There's one property in question that has literally turned itself into an undocumented dumping ground for tires and whatever other scrap they can haul off.
So when these orders come to us, are they gonna be specific of what has to be cleaned up? That way, we don't get ourselves into this position?
Absolutely. So what'll happen is Mr. Avery and his office will get the order prepared. It will be brought to me. I will read over it, make sure that the wording is the way it needs to be and then we will sign it. So when y'all get it, it will say exactly what the ordinance states, what's gonna be cleaned up and so forth.
At one time, over the last few months, this process was moving to where it would be taken out of magistrate and put into superior. But now, we're back to keeping it in magistrate.
The main reason for that is just time. Our superior courts are completely overburdened with... I'm not saying that this isn't legitimate, in a legitimate issue, because it most definitely is. But they're handling, you know, crimes against children and aggravated assaults and murders and things like that. And their docket is always overflowing. And so if we can help reduce that burden and handle it at our, handle it at the magistrate level, that's what we're trying to do because I think we can speed the process up. It's still a slow process, but you know, instead of backlog for 18 months, we may only be backlog for three or four months. And that's kind of what we're looking at. So just a time and trying to help the community overall as quickly as we can.
And they can appeal, I mean, if we filed a civil nuisance abatement action in magistrate court and got an order that said in 30 days to clean it up or the county can go out and clean it up, the landowner can appeal those to superior court and that you'll have a hearing in superior court on those anyway.
But that appeal would take place before, prior to us cleaning it up?
Yes, yeah, we would wait...
It would be six to 12 months down the road before you get into court on it.
Even if the judge gave us, you can clean it, they have seven days to clean it up and the county can clean it up after that. We would wait to the appeals time ran before we cleaned it up for that very reason, because they could appeal and we don't want to have taken that action unless the order is final and cannot be appealed.
Any other questions?
Are these items that would mainly go to the inert landfill then?
I believe that's just about where everything would go, sir.
Appreciate it, Drew.
And the ordinance that you have presented tonight is the one that we've...
No, we have not drafted an ordinance for that. And I think it's more of, I think our ordinance allows, I mean, there's things we might could tighten up and stuff, but I think our current ordinance allows us to do that. It's more of a question of what are the resources that the county has and is there gonna be a budget? Or are we gonna use outside people? Are we gonna use county work crew? Is public work's gonna be in charge? Or who's going to do this work and how is it going to be handled? And then we could go forward if that's what the board will...
Somebody very competent, if it's explicit as you said it is, you want somebody to make sure they know what they're getting.
Yeah, and that was something, you know, hopefully, we could do it within the course of a week maximum. And that was something I would probably stay on hand, kind of firsthand and kind of run and get like a search warrant, right? Going through those specifics to make sure that we're staying in compliance ourselves.
If we bid it out, do we have to get three bids on it to do that? Each and every case?
I think it depends on what the work would be and how much that work is costing. And again, the difference is, are we talking about going and cleaning up trash? Are we removing vehicles? Are we tearing down a structure, right? If you're tearing down a structure, you're talking about something totally different than cleaning up some trash and movable things like a camper or tents and stuff. So it all depends on what you're doing as to how you would go about doing it.
And in the case of this one there, close to Bremen, he has somewhat of a fence that looks like it needs to go. Is that considered tearing down something that we may not haul off?
The definition of the trash, junk and debris ordinance leaves enough room that some of it's still, and that's what the attorney was saying, that we can tighten some of it up. But some of it, I mean, obviously, if the fence is decrepit and falling down, to me, that fence is no longer viable. It's no longer a viable option. And based upon how our current ordinance reads, I feel like it would be a candidate to be removed as well.
Thank you. Would it be too much to ask Chairman if we could just swap item three and item four since Marshal Fowler's already standing there? It looks like he's got...
I appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead. Number four, camper ordinance?
So many of us at one time or another, we're seeing campers use as long-term residences throughout this county. While the intent of this proposed ordinance is not to prohibit temporary or practical uses such as living in a camper while properly constructing a permanent home that was properly permitted or accommodating visiting family members over a weekend. It is designated to increase the long-term, non-traditional residential use of campers that has become too common. Unfortunately, through my work, I've encountered individuals residing in campers who are not simply down on their luck, but are actively avoiding detection and accountability, including individuals wanted for serious crimes such as aggravated assault and offenses against children. In many cases, these unconventional living arrangements serve not as a temporary solution, but as a means to evade law enforcement and circumvent community standards. One of my goals since assuming this job has been to modernize and align Harrelson County's ordinances with responsible planning for the future. We all want to see a sustainable, structured growth in our county. Growth there reflects the values of a safe, family-oriented community. In order to achieve that, we must ensure that our ordinances address real, ongoing issues and this is one such issue that has persisted unchecked for far too long. Beyond the public safety concerns, long-term camper habitation also presents significant public health risk, mainly related to improper sewage disposal and other unsanitary living conditions. These conditions often result not from responsible citizens facing hardship, but from unauthorized, unregulated encampments throughout this county. That said, I want to emphasize, this ordinance is not aimed at criminalizing poverty or punishing those that are lawfully using campers for short-term solutions during difficult times. As with all ordinances, discretion and compassion will guide enforcement. The goal is to strike a balance ensuring that the dignity of individuals while protecting the long-term health, safety and quality of life for our residents. This ordinance is not reactionary. It is long overdue to address a situation that has already strained our systems, endangered our citizens and undermined our community standards for over a decade. And that's kind of my take on that.
Thank you.
We have a copy of that ordinance. Have you written that?
I gave you a copy.
Okay. Okay.
And we've had this one written for a while, I think.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth on it for probably four or five months, tightening it up. But it's good to go.
It's good to go.
Thank you, Marshal. Now, again, this is a zoning ordinance, so it will need to be, go through planning and zoning and be advertised as well.
Alright. Thank you. Okay, next we'll get item number three, Beach Creek Road. I asked Mr. Keith Williams if he'd come to the podium. Thank you for coming tonight.
I'm here today, I'm Keith Williams, here today to see about getting Beach Creek Road. It's already a dead end at the bridge, dirt on both sides, dirt road. See about getting it closed off, gated off on each side. In the past, there's always been something going on down there, especially as it gets warmer, more people come. But people leave their trash and they also dump trash. They've been, animals abandoned down there, they've been deer carcasses left. And I just, I've run off registered child molester down there. There's ATVs, as the summer goes on, it gets dry, they get in the creek, go up and down the creek to the river. And I put up no trespassing signs and they just take them down. And as school gets out, it gets crowded on both sides. So if you could get both sides, would be better than one side. Because if they park on one side, they'll walk to the other. My grandfather used to have a, they called it his garden spot down there. And here recently, there's trucks, four-wheel-drive trucks just get in there and spin around. But it's always a real rough down there. And you know, there's gonna be a shooting or trouble one of these days. Talked to both sides, all the property owners, and they think it's a great idea.
Avery, do we need anything in writing from those property owners to do this? I forgot how we normally handle this.
Are we closing it or are we just, are we abandoning? I guess that's the question.
Mr. Williams and the other property owners all have agreed to put a gate up beyond each side of the creek.
The bridges.
The bridge is out. And it's already, anything you want to add Terry, but it's already got dead-end signs on all the roads it's got. They're just wanting to move some gates up the road to keep anybody from getting all the way down to the creek and having their parties and what have you and dumping trash. So, and the landowners have, they have agreed, I've talked to both sides. They will put the gates up theirself and they'll padlock it and the landowners that touches each side will have a key.
Yeah, the landowner is, by the gates and erect them theirself, you know.
How many different landowners were involved?
There's two on the south side and three on the north side.
And, and, and y'all have agreed to build it far enough away from the waters that they, it will keep them from wanting to walk down there to it?
Yes, yes.
I guess that's the question, is do we just want to close the road? Or do we want to abandon it so that it goes back to the landowners on both sides? And then they can control it and do it?
How many years that bridge been out?
Ten years.
Ten years.
It was April, I believe, April the fifteenth of fifteen.
Terry, in the road department, has there been any issues or concerns about ever opening that road back up?
I had never called the law, because I figured I could take care of it myself, but I've been verbally talked, you know, that, that the water was everybody's property. And I said, well, the land is the center of creek, you know. The deed goes to the center of the creek.
But all families, you said three on one end and two on the other, everybody agrees?
Everybody's agreed.
I don't see a problem in it.
Brian's talked to them and-
Do we need something signed by all parties?
So if we go through the full abandonment process, then yes, we send out notices and we have the public hearing. And we have one or two of those that we'll be doing very soon. So like I said, if we want to do this one, we could do it.
One or two of those, abandonments?
Yes, yeah.
For what, Mr. Williams, and then would want, I'd imagine abandonment would probably be a better option for them, just in terms of, well, from the county perspective too, of not having to spend dollars.
It's certain from what Terry and Mr. Williams said, both of them, it sounds like, yes, that'd be better.
Abandon would be the better option. Is that fine with you?
Yes. Does abandonment mean that you'll never put the bridge back in, or?
It'll belong to you.
Yeah, I would turn that over to y'all.
At the other end of those roads, we're still talking about the same three and two.
Yes.
All the way back up to one hundred, yeah, one twenty?
One twenty.
Yeah.
Well, it stopped right there, Denise Roberts, there's the last house on the right. She's the property owner on the right-hand side.
But it's paved down, there's a, down so far and then dirt road.
Right.
Both sides are dirt road.
But there's some pavement on one, on the one twenty section?
Yeah, the Beach Creek Road is paved, so, closed, none of that.
Just the dirt portion.
If we close it, abandon it, we won't never be responsible for putting any pavement back.
Or doing anything for that matter.
Just for that section.
Go back to the landowners.
The county road, that's why I think an abandonment would be better for what the need is.
I agree. But it wouldn't be for the whole road, it'd just be a-
Is there any measurement?
Measurement.
I guess we just need to get something signed and submitted to you so we can add this one to the list of-
Yeah, well, it sounds like that's what y'all want to do, so we'll put it on the list with the other one to two that we have, and we'll get them going.
Sounds good.
Alrighty, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith for coming. Alright. Okay, item number five. Avery's going to talk to us about how on the, as the process of the, our, the land south of Talapusa that the county owns on, if anything starts arising from anything development on it, how we, he's going to explain the process, how we should liquidate it.
I guess the request is currently that, obviously, the development authority's marketing the property, and when they get a project, that we'll have to have an intergovernmental agreement with them and on a per-project basis and, and go forward that way. But, I mean, there's other ways you can agree with the development authority on how to, to do that. But anyway, that was one of the proposals.
Seems like that'd be the easiest thing to do.
And that's transferring it over to?
No, that's, so, having an IGA with the development authority on a per-project basis would mean the development authority brings a project to you. You say, that makes sense to us, and we'll, and again, we can have like a form, kind of IGA, where you fill in the blanks, like the price, which may be different on, by who gets it, right? Incentives, or utilities, other things, zoning. So, but have things that you can fill in so that you can control how that's property's done. And then it would be a simultaneous closing, essentially. When the deal closed, then the property would be transferred. Certainly, there's other ways to do it, like transferring the property now. But the question is, is what do you get for the property now and how do you, right? So-
So we can just have an individual IGA on each individual?
Potential customer.
Potential client.
Right, we could have a form one that we could use and kind of fill in the blanks depending on what the specific project was. And then, that way, the development authority and the user and project moves forward with whatever they need to, knowing that the Board of Commissioners would sign the deed and convey the property at the appropriate time.
We won't, none of those fill-in-the-blanks will be filled in until the project's brought before us. In other words, there's not going to be standard abatements, there's not going to be standard, anything language about we're going to do X for the road, infrastructure, or anything. Everything stands on its own merit.
The IGA would be crafted for the specific project, yes. And it would be subject to your approval.
What's wrong with why we got it right now?
I mean, I don't know that there's anything wrong with how you have it right now.
I mean, basically, that's what we do now, but it's not a formal intergovernmental agreement. But all parties understand for anything to go forward, that it has to be an agreement. So why bother in drafting one?
I think this would be an ease-of-transaction type thing of, hey, it's ready, it's prepared, we've already consented to this type of an agreement. So if something were to come in tomorrow, there's not special-called meetings and all of these other things that would necessarily have to occur. You know, we already have that agreement in place, it's just simply the terms of that agreement, signed, close, close, and then move on, instead of having to delay the process even further.
We don't know the terms of that, that's what bothers me, because we don't know what the terms of that agreement's going to be until we talk to that potential customer or the development authority has, has talked to them and is able to bring to us what's on the table. I don't want to limit ourselves to a certain criteria on any job, I really don't.
But every intergovernmental agreement will be different, is what, is what I'm taking-
They would all be different.
We're not turning it over individually, it'll all be on an individual basis.
I think that's the-
It will be, but some of the specific stuff, if we agree to this, is going to be in the hands of the development authority to say, well, they've already agreed to this, this, and this. Well, maybe we did and maybe we don't, depending on what the, what the customer, what they're bringing. We, we may not want it at all. I just feel like we're losing control as the county owning the property if we give up that opportunity to the development authority to negotiate on our behalf.
So that's the difference, is that, so the request came that the development authority needs to have some certainty to go out and market the property for these projects and developments. The county, obviously, like you've just described, wants to have control and make sure they know what's going on. So what's, how can we help the development authority out, but still, the Board of Commissioners remains in control? And that's why the thought was, well, on a per-project basis, which is, as you indicated, is what we're doing anyways. But we would have a form agreement so that we're not, we have a template of how it's going to go forward. And so when a project comes, we can easily put in the information, you know, get it on the next agenda and move forward with it. But it would be specific to that project, and it would have specific conditions and requirements based on that project.
We would be the final say, I guess.
Absolutely, yeah, you're going to be the final-
They all wouldn't be the same, every single one of them's going to be different. We just, we're just have a standardized, that can, that the blanks can be filled in, basically.
Then it comes to us to be approved.
That way, there isn't any stopping or nothing that's in, in formal writing, that every single one of them's going to-
So in that agreement, are we going to be having things in there? If it's, if salaries are between this and this, and employees' X numbers, and salaries are being paid and 401Ks are given, oh, well, then you qualify for a better price. I, I don't, I don't want any of those blanks.
They wouldn't be.
Okay, well. Yes, sir.
Please.
I'm chairman of the development authority, I guess, I'm not sure, I mean, when we did, when we did Infra Metals, we did a simultaneous transfer of deed at, at the closing table. So the county sold it to us, we sold it to Infra Metal. That's how that went down. You ask what's, what's the importance of it? So when the prospect comes to Harrelson County, to developing Harrelson County, they're not trying to approve this, this site for their use, they're trying to eliminate us. And when they come into, when they come into the county and they find out that we have a, a political infrastructure that they have to navigate first before they can even think about owning this property, they, we, we get eliminated. Because we're not trying to take ownership of it, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, that we should, that you guys shouldn't transfer ownership to us ahead of time. I'm just saying that you ask why, what's important? Well, if you, if, if the county wants to sell it, you have to go out for bid and auction. Then you don't know who your buyer is, you don't know what they're going to put there. So I'm faced with a, with a, as the chairman right now, I'm faced with a, with a letter of intent that we discussed in the executive session, that I don't feel like in good, in good conscience, I can sign. Because I don't, development authority don't own that property. So I'm being asked to sign a letter of intent to sell a piece of property that we don't own.
Well, what, but, but you will know, what that letter, you will know what that letter intent in details, and we won't.
Yeah, you do, because, because we're, we're going to stay in constant communication with you guys, like we have, like we've done already. You guys are aware of the letter of intent, it's not, it's not ready for public, public exposure yet.
We'll know all the parameters before we have to release any.
Yeah, I mean, you guys appointed us, and we've, we're asking you to trust us, just like you trusted us on, on Infra Metals. And we was prosperous, we, we, we made $250,000, and we give the county 42 acres. So you guys appointed us, we're asking you to trust us.
And the letter of intent can be signed saying, subject to the county conveying the property to us. And then, that's when the letter of intent gets provided to us to fill in the blanks of the IGA. And then we can sign an agreement that says, yes, the county will convey this property in a simultaneous closing, just like the Infra Metals deal, which went very smoothly on the simultaneous closing, yeah, yeah.
It's been, it's been a prosperous deal, that property's set in for 25 years.
Basically, this is, this is just, this is a, an easier transition for the development authority. They've already got the property. And it'll be on an individual basis anyway, that we will still have control over, so I, I mean, I don't, I agree.
Because we're constitutional authority.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're still going to have to agree, the buck stops with us anyway. So it's going to come back to us, and we can, if it's not wrote right, we, we can deny it.
Right, like in this-
But they're just having this authority to be able to promote it, not to have to come back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Correct, correct. It's not, it's not a, it's not a property grab or anything like that, it's just, it's just that a, and I'm not, I'm still not saying it's, because I don't know, Avery probably knows better, that whether we should just do a quick claim deed blanket. I don't know if that, that's what we should do. But like you say, if there's something in the LOI that says, at the point where we can do this ridding in there that says that the property will be conveyed to the development authority and then to the buyer. Is that right, Avery? Some, some verbiage like that?
Yes, that's great.
So I don't know if, 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 if tonight we need, or any, any time soon, we need to just deed it properly over to us. But we need a, we need a sandbox to work in, to say that, or some kind of agreement that says that the Harrelson County will convey deed when, when we bring a prospect to your liking. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright. Item number six, planning and zoning department procedures.
Oh, yeah, that, is that about Mr. McCain? Is that, is that what that was?
Or just the procedures?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Zoning procedures?
Mr. McCain had requested that, which I thought you had spoken with somebody and took care of this, about giving, you did?
Or for it?
Yeah, I thought you had spoke to Ms. Glenda and got that taken care of, so that's all that was. Yeah, the same thing, it's been taken care of.
And procedures are?
Yep.
I would like to add item, item number seven, executive session for personnel.
Going back to six, have you sat down and discussed as to what information planning and zoning department was wanting? And, and the reason being, this all took place, I think, last Tuesday. I've told this story a couple of times, I was on, in the Water Authority that morning, and, and they have a report, it says there's 13 new taps put out in the month of April. And they had more taps in May than did in April. And of course, we're always looking at our water, and water comes to us in various sundry ways, from very, and from various sundry directions. And so, we need to know at the Water Authority, where are these houses being built? What area of our county is being impacted with growth? And, and thus far, it appears that the builders that are in our, out in unincorporated area are building on larger tracts of land, being five acres. They're not rezoning, they're keeping the land agricultural. The property touches a county road, so there's no infrastructure needed to put in. So when Glenda issues the permit, that's as far as it goes. Planning and zoning knows nothing about it, we at the board know nothing about it. The Water Authority knows not where the water's going. And so you get out and you ride the roads one afternoon, you say, gosh, what's going on over here? What's going on over there? Well, we don't know. And that's the question, I think, that some people have been asked of by the, by residents in the county. And we kind of look like a deer in headlights, and we don't know what they're talking about, because we don't. And so, we do need monthly reporting as to what's being proposed and what she has permitted, where the property is, how large the tract is, is it residential? So that we can relay that to our taxpayers when we're asked. And I think that's all that board-
So what, so one of the main procedures that I've experienced so far is, if someone buys a large tract of land and they divide it up, well, and it's all agriculture on an incorporated area. So what happens is, if it's under 20 lots, this is the, whoever's doing this project, the family or who they pay to do it, it comes in, and every department, utility, or service it affects has to sign off on this under, under- has to sign off on this under, under 20. And so on that one, I noticed it had something about planning and zoning on it. I, I thought they, I personally thought they'd get a copy too, but they don't. But now they do. They're gonna be part of the signature list. It will, and that, and that will be cause for a meeting with the chairman of the planning and zoning board to come, to come in, and he will sign just like road, fire, water, every, all these entities. The, it's, it's the department head that signs off. So that's the procedure, everything under that.
Okay.
And so that is, they are going to have, and, and only one, there haven't been but one so far that I've had to look at or saw. And so, so that's the plan, this will be, and I've encouraged, I've encouraged them over to start having some work sessions every month to discuss, whether if they discuss planning and zoning or just ordinances, or just being familiar with things. So when, this is a bit, our county is busy. There's a lot of people coming in, there's a lot of things happening, there's a lot of farmland being sold, that families are selling. And, and it's just, it's what's happening. And the only people control is the people that owns the land, because they're the owners, and they can do that.
It's not everything under 20, it's anything over four up to 20.
Say that one more time.
So it's not zero to 20, it's anything over four up to 20.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that, so there wasn't any.
Thanks, Pete.
And I, I encourage the citizens to get on, all of our ordinances is, is on the internet. I mean, it, it's available and everything.
Tom, Tom, question, she answered, I'm sorry, she answered part of my question. But with that, so if something's already been zoned appropriately by the county to accommodate whatever it's on for, you're saying it's gotta go back before the zoning board to be resigned off on, when you've already voted that that's what the property was assessed?
Whatever's in, whatever is, whatever is in writing in our ordinances, if, if, I, I'll give you, there's a tract of land, farmland, 254 acres in the Stebbin community, that has just been laid out into 18 building sites. And any of them range from five to, I think there's one 40-acre tract up to that. I know 18, 40, 10, there's, and they all touch road, McGuinness Road and Stebbin Road. And everything met the, what's in our ordinance him and everything. So, but if that goes over that,
Gotcha.
it goes to planning and zoning. If it goes over, it's gotta stay under 20. But if it hits 20, it goes to planning and zoning.
Or if
That's what's in the ordinance now.
Or clarify me if I'm wrong, if there has to be an entrance and exit, period?
Sure.
Okay.
That would go before, that then would go before planning and zoning because of, of roads and curb and gutters and all that.
And all that.
Yeah, that's subdivision, I missed it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Maybe we go into executive session for purposes of personnel.
Personnel.